Okay, I have 6:00 PM, so I believe we're ready to start and call this meeting to order on March 6th, with the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. It is a work session. The first thing that we need to do is go ahead and allow Chair Blevins to participate in this meeting. So I want to read the recommended, or the code. It's 2.2-3708.3 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. "Permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the Board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations." Chair Cherry Blevins has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors Virginia meeting scheduled for Monday, March 6th, 2023 at 6:00 PM, to be physically held at the Government Center in Christiansburg. The reason for the request is for being out of town. So we, as members physically present, I need a motion to do so. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? A motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Supervisor Demonts?
Aye.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Six, uh, five ayes.
Okay, thank you. So Chair Blevins, you were legal.
I'm here, and I, I agree.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, thank, thank you Board and Vice Chair Biggs. Good evening, everyone. My apologies for not being in person with you. Vice Chair, if you'd be so kind to preside over this meeting, this special called meeting, so it can run smoothly, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll, we'll see to it. All right, our next item of business is we're going to have our invocation and our pledge, led by our county administrator, Mr. Craig Meadows.
Thank you. If we can rise, if you're able for a moment of silence, then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we are going to enter into a work session, and I need a motion to do so. Is there such a motion? And it's to discuss the budget and tax rate.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Okay. Supervisor Shepherd?
Aye.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Demonts?
Aye.
Supervisor Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, so I guess what we're going to do first is we're doing the budget, and then we are doing, um, the tax rates. So with that being said, Mr. Meadows, is there anything that you want to say ahead of time?
Yes, ma'am. We actually do have two presentations for the board this evening. I know after the budget was presented last week, several of you mentioned that you would like more information on the dollar amounts that are related to our paid first first time, excuse me, paid first responder program, and the dollar amount that's associated with that, some additional information. So Michael Gary's here, and he's going to share some information on that. After that, we also have a brief presentation on how the dollar amount was arrived at for the school resource officer positions. There were some questions about that. And I don't know, it was Brad or Angie, somebody who's doing the SRO presentation. One of us, okay. Well, it's three slides. I think we'll be okay. But first, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to ask Michael to come up and just give you a review of the paid first responder program. Brad's coming up as well. Thank you, Brad. To see if we can help answer any questions regarding that budget item.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you all very much for having me up here tonight to talk about our budget request for fiscal year '24. As you guys know, we have been working very hard on this budget. We've come up with what we believe to be honest and true numbers to better the program that we're currently providing the citizens of the county. So just real quick to go over with you guys, the call volume in the two areas that we're currently providing services. The first being the Shawsville-Elliston area of the county. You'll see that the call volume between 2021 and 2022 increased by approximately 9.5%. That can be attributed, number one, to having paid first responders in that area of the county. Knowing that a truck is available when someone calls for help does make a difference. And so we did see an uptick in calls down there. And then you'll notice in the Reiner area, there was a decrease in calls by 1.9%. That can be attributed to the less frequent mutual aid calls that we're running in the town of Christiansburg. But we do anticipate the call volume in both those areas of the county will continue to go up as our population continues to grow.
Also, just, I just want to take a moment to expand on what Michael was saying is, as we all know, our county is growing. Every meeting we go to, we hear about the growth that Montgomery County is experiencing, and that's great. We also know with that, that, that population, more calls for service for our emergency services, fire, EMS, law enforcement, whether it be new people that are living in the county, or as we build infrastructure like parks and things of that nature, people traveling to Montgomery County for games or events or whatever, we have more people in the county, so therefore, you know, the, the number of calls that we will be responding to will, will continue to increase. It's just by sheer number of volume of people that are traveling into our county or residing into our county. And so we wanted to be, to make sure that we're prepared for that as we move forward. And this, this illustration kind of gives you a little bit of historical input as to what we're seeing over the past year.
So on the next slide here, you'll see a quick breakdown of the numbers and the cost associated with our requests for fiscal year '24. I'll get into some more details on those as we kind of go through the slides and explain each one of those to you. But the total request is approximately $1.35 million. So our first request for fiscal year '24 is to add eight full-time emergency medical technicians. We currently have eight paramedics that work full-time shifts for us. They're on a 24-hour schedule that goes, essentially cycles through each one of those providers. And they're supplemented each day by a part-time employee, whether that be an EMT or a paramedic. So each day, we have full-time personnel in the truck, but they're always being supplemented by part-time personnel. One of the issues that we're having with that is there's just no consistency. So in order to make sure that our ambulances are always staffed and in service, we really need those full-time bodies that have the investment into being here. Our part-timers are a great asset to our organization. The only issue is, is they work other jobs. And so other jobs, other full-time jobs could be their priority. Whereas if we have our own full-time staff, we're not seeing those trucks out of service as frequently. So you'll see, we currently have 25 part-time positions. They're filling roughly 1,100 shifts each year. On top of that, all the time off requests and various other reasons that our full-time personnel are out. So our second request for fiscal year '24 is to include four full-time shift supervisors onto our roster. The shift supervisors would help us fill current operational shortfalls that we're having, mainly due to the fact that our three administrative staff have other administrative duties, and we just don't have the capacity anymore to be on-call for 17 weeks out of the year. So these full-time shift supervisors will be responsible for various things, to include shift management, handling our scheduling, inventory management, equipment management. And they'll also be operational supervisors, so they'll be on the road with our EMTs and paramedics to help them provide a higher level of service to our citizens. And then some continued justification for these positions. The other thing that we're seeing now is while we do have staffed ambulances in those two areas of the county, there's no good indicator as to when we're going to get those additional calls for service. So particularly in the Shawsville-Elliston area, our truck might go out on a call, and then three minutes later, they get dispatched to another call. And currently, we don't have trucks in those areas that can fill that need. And we don't have justification to put more trucks into service because the call volume just doesn't support it. But what we can do is have these shift supervisors on-call that could provide a first response service while we wait the mutual aid ambulance from Christiansburg or Blacksburg, which could take anywhere from 25 to 30 minutes, depending on what their location is.
And so essentially, what that would do is, it would be a, another trained, what we want to term "paramedic," in the area, in the county that is working. So when a truck gets tied up, is on a transport or whatever, and another call comes in, they have an immediate response. Someone is there, ready to respond to that cardiac arrest, or whatever that call for service may be. They can get there, get the patient stabilized, be, be rendering first aid, whatever, while the ambulance is en route.
One of the other things that I'll just throw in there, too, is the, one of the issues that we run into is if somebody calls out at 5:45 in the morning, we don't have anybody to come in and fill that shift. And there are not many folks out there that already, aren't already committed to other jobs or whatever the case may be that can come in on that short notice. So in the event that that does happen, these supervisors could fill in on that truck until they're able to get somebody in to fill in their place. And then additionally, with the two requests for full-time personnel, that also increases the cost that we have associated with benefits. And then in order to make sure that these folks are able to work the hours that we require them to, we need to make sure that we have the supplemented overtime costs and part-time salaries. Because while it is great to have full-time staff, there are days that they'll be out of work, on vacation, sick, whatever the case may be. And so we need to be able to fill in those gaps using either part-time staff or to pay our full-time folks overtime to come in and fill those shifts. So our budget number, while it may seem high for the overtime and the, and the additional part-time salaries, we had to budget for the three weeks that all of our full-time personnel could take out each year, plus sick time, time for training, time for meetings. So that's why that number's so high. But that just ensures that those trucks will always be staffed. And then additionally, inflation, you can't get away from it anywhere. We're seeing the same thing with fuel costs, medical equipment. All the day-to-day supplies that we use cost more than they did a year ago. And so we need to make sure that we have the funds to be able to purchase that equipment. Then real quick here, I'll, I'll give you some brief explanation on this. So to give you guys a better picture of how we look compared to other counties, we decided to pull four light counties that have similar population, similar demographics, similar call volume to what our paid first responders and volunteers respond to each year. So on this slide here, you'll see Montgomery County and the full budget load between what the county gives to our staff, to the volunteer departments, whether it be their operational budgets, capital, insurance. But you also see in there, the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg are included to show the amount of dollars that they give to their fire and rescue departments as well. So for fiscal year '23, you'll see that within the entire county, fire, rescue receives approximately $7.4 million. And for fiscal '24, if all our requests are approved, we'll be closer to nine. And for fiscal 24, if all our requests are approved, we'll be closer to $9 million. And then you'll see population, call volume, and then the number of paid staff, full-time paid staff within the county. So, on this slide here is where you can see the breakdown between Albemarle County, Hanover County, Roanoke County, and Rockingham County. All very similar population sizes, similar, similar demographics, and call volume varies, but is close to where we're at. And you'll see the amount of paid staff that they have, and then the budgets associated with their departments. Any questions?
Any questions? Let's start on this side. Supervisor Shepard.
If I can get this thing on. So, on that last slide with the different counties, like Albemarle has 21 million, but that's county-wide, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Supervisor Bone.
On slide two, you mentioned something about mutual aid in Christiansburg, and that's the reason why the call went lower. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, so essentially, we have a really good mutual aid system in this county where anytime that one department gets overwhelmed by calls, the next closest department is called on to help. So, in years past, as Christiansburg has responded to calls in Shawsville or anywhere else in the county, they've had to rely on that mutual aid system from Reiner to respond into that area. So, essentially, as we've began covering the calls in Shawsville and Elliston, Christiansburg hasn't had to take their trucks down the mountain as much. So, they're able to keep their, their trucks in the town, provide the service to the town residents, and Reiner's not called as frequently to back them up when they get busy.
I got you. On slide five, you mentioned something about 17 weeks. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, so essentially, the way that we operate currently is myself, Tyler, and Brandon are on-call for a week at a time. So, in order to make sure that our folks have the support that they need, whether it be on calls or just administratively, somebody has to be there 24/7 to make sure that they have that support. So, if we get a bad call at 2 o'clock in the morning, somebody's going to help them out. So, we're on-call from Monday to Monday currently. So, that's on top of the normal job duties that we have. So, if you divide that out through the year, we're on-call approximately 17.33 weeks out of the year.
I got you. And then on slide nine, about the locality comparisons, clearly, we're much less because we still have a lot of volunteers, but is there a way to really factor that we are as economical as the others if we had to go? I'm not saying we're gonna not have any volunteers. I'm just saying, there's got to be a way to compare, you know, the cost of what we're trying to accomplish a little bit more realistically, because they don't have the volunteers.
Yeah, the, one of the things about all these other localities is they started paying for fire and EMS services long, long time ago. So, as we're looking at, you know, this $1.3 million increase, they've been doing that for 20 years. So, they've built their systems up as their volunteerism has declined, they've been able to supplement it. We're just starting it much later than they have. Not any discredit to us, it's a real credit to our volunteers that they've been able to do this as long as they have. But the one thing about all these other four counties is they also have a very strong volunteer population. But that's declined over the years, and they've had to supplement that.
In other words, there really isn't a way to truly compare these counties because we're late to the game, or, you know, we were managing much better than they were for longer, you know?
Yeah, we've just had a great volunteer population. That's what it boils down to, is we, we haven't had to pay for these services for a long time. We're very fortunate for that.
And why does Albemarle have more calls? I mean, does really 10,000 more people give you 2,000 more calls?
It, those numbers are hard to kind of justify. It, it's more based on, like, for instance, we have Interstate 81, which gener, generates a lot of call volume for us. They have Interstate 64. So, it's all about the demographics of the county more than anything.
Geography, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Can I jump in right here?
Yes.
There's an error on that slide that's my fault. The current FY '23 FTE count is, it's not, 24 is 29, right? Fiscal year 24 is 29 people, not 41.
It would be 41 if these positions get approved.
Okay, because of that paid people in Blacksburg and Christiansburg. Okay.
And I don't, I don't know if Blacksburg and Christiansburg have requested additional positions. I haven't been able to look at their proposed budgets for next year yet, but 41 would be the number if our positions were to be approved.
And that's, again, that's county-wide, including the paid staff and...
Yeah, yeah. So, that includes Christiansburg Rescue, Christiansburg Fire, Blacksburg Fire, and Blacksburg Rescue?
24 would be from the county.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, yes.
Supervisor Demots.
I don't have any questions. I actually fully support your request, so I'm happy to, to say that loudly and proudly now. I'm really, really glad for the information. I think when we first started talking about doing paid fire and rescue, I was concerned about the number of part-time positions. It looks like we're transitioning to mostly full-time, which I'm happy to see, just because I think that also helps with employee turnover. You're able to retain your people longer. So, I, I really appreciate the information. I really appreciate what all of you do and how well you've collaborated with our volunteers and how much respect that you've showed to their longstanding service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I don't have any questions, but I do really appreciate, because I have a little bit better insight into what you do, being on the Fire Commission, all the work that you and your staff put in to keeping the stats so that we are always covered and we're all, we're always going to have somebody there to save the day. And that's really what it all boils down to, and you've said that from the very beginning. And I think both paid and volunteer staff understand that, so, uh, good job.
Very fortunate to have a good team of career staff and volunteers.
Okay. Supervisor King.
Thank you all very much. I do appreciate it. Where you propose you're going to house these new people if you get them?
So, the eight EMTs will be with the paramedic that's on shift. So, four of them would be in the Shawsville-Elliston at the Elliston Fire Department. The other four would be with the Reiner truck at Reiner Rescue. And then the shift supervisors is kind of to be determined. Most likely, they'll be at the sheriff's office until we can find a more permanent home, but that's the most central location that we have right now.
How many full-time people you got now?
Currently, we have 12 full-time. We have eight operational and four administrative.
You don't have no part-time?
We have 25 part-time employees currently. Yes, sir.
Would, would that save a little money if we moved some of them up to full-time?
It would save money on the part-time salaries end. In the end, it, it would end up costing more because it is more expensive to have full-time employees, but it guarantees that call coverage.
But what I'm saying, though, is if you, if you move part-time people to full-time, that would be less full-time people you'd have to hire.
Yes.
And when we figured out how much that additional cost would be, we subtracted out those part-time positions that would become full-time. So, it's, then, we took the whole cost that we're paying now, and then we took the new proposal and netted them off. So, so we're using some of those part-time salaries to fund the full-time increase.
Oh, so you are getting rid of part-time people?
Some of them, yes.
Just my concern, and I've talked to several of you about this, when we first started this paid stuff, and I know we needed it, I do, but the other low counties I talked to, they said the biggest thing you need to watch is it will roll out of hand with the hiring. And that's just my concern. That's all.
Okay. Chair Blevins.
Is she with us?
Thank you.
Yes, she is.
Mr. Vry, on the, on slide nine, where it gives the locality comparisons, those comparisons, they include both fire and EMS?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but for, for ours, they're all going to be EMS providers?
Yes, ma'am. We're just proposing more EMS providers.
Okay, very good. I was just trying to compare, looking at like Roanoke, where it has 200 full-time staff, if they were all, do you know what the breakdown of that is?
With most of these localities, their full-time employees within the fire and EMS system are providing both services, so they're dual-role employees.
Okay, okay. That was my only question, and again, I do appreciate it. I know with the growing population, it is a need and a concern for our citizens to make sure that they do have quality responsive care and when 911 is called. So, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions from anyone?
I do have.
Supervisor Shepard.
And it's not so much a budget question for this, but just from my own information, and I have been asked by a couple people, is, are there any plans to add paid in Long
It, it's hard to speak to that. I'd say that the only issue that we foresee in that particular area of the county is the call volume just doesn't support it. So, where we see close to 1,000 calls in Shawsville, they're only running close to 100 calls down in the Long Shop-McCoy area.
And one of the main reasons I ask is because I know there's a couple getting ready to retire, key players.
I think it's important to keep in mind that that, that is obviously something that we will have to address as, as we move forward, is how do we cover that? How do we ensure all the areas of the county that we're responsible for receive timely and adequate response? And so, in short, is there a plan to date? No, there's not, but it is something that's on the radar of, you know, how do we address that? And, you know, it looks like we're growing, 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 but there, there are obviously going to be needs coming forward that we have to plan for. And so, we think that this is a step that moves us in that direction to set us up for that if that should occur.
Okay, thank you.
Any other follow-ups? I just want to thank Michael and Brad for the detailed information and, of course, for all you do, too. And I agree that, you know, you just have to, we're, we're just taking steps into this. And so, we are going to have to constantly monitor what is going on. So, thank you. Anything else?
And Chair, and Vice Chair Biggs, and Board members, you know, one of the reasons I asked them to be here with us tonight is, that was, as I call it, as, as we were putting the budget together, that number was an eye-popper. When, when it came in, it's like, holy cow. But Michael and his folks, we, we quizzed them pretty good and went through it. And so, I feel very confident that what's being asked for is what is needed. I don't think there's any, any fluff or, or additional positions in there, just to, just to have additional positions. There is sound justification, in my opinion, for every position that's being asked for.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you all very much.
Board members, the other item that we have, like I said, a brief presentation, it's three slides, because I heard some discussion on that one as well, is, thank you, Marty, is a discussion about school resource officers. And Angie's going to walk us through these slides, and then Angie, Brad, and I, all three are available, and the sheriff's back there, too. So, I, there's folks available to answer any specifics if you have them.
Thank you. This is just a brief overview. I think everybody knows where we are with this process. Recently, the town of Christiansburg voted to remove town police from the Montgomery County Public School facilities within the town corporate limits effective July 1st. So, we heard from you, the Board of Supervisors, that you wanted to provide funding for SROs in those school facilities in the two towns. So, we included in the 24 budget proposal, an additional five SRO positions to be managed by the sheriff's office, and they would be placed in the school system based on recommendations from the schools and the sheriff's department. This is a summary, several of you had asked about the cost per SRO. So, this tells the salary and benefits for an SRO, the cost of a vehicle, uniforms and equipment, which brings the total cost per, per position to about $135,000. Six positions, I mean, excuse me, five positions would cost about $675,000. And then a few of you had asked about the cost for two additional positions, which would be $270,000. That's all that we had for you tonight, but if you want to discuss or ask questions, we'll be glad to help you.
And I'll just add to that as well, there was a question about how did we come up with five? And honestly, we wanted to include several positions if the Board wanted to address the issue within Christiansburg, which is three officers. And then we added two additional officers for the Board to discuss.
There are five, there are five schools in the Christiansburg strand, and then Montgomery Central makes the sixth school.
Yep, so, I, I won't call it a placeholder, but we wanted something in the budget to allow the Board to have some discussion as to how you would like to try to move forward with this issue. So, with that, I'll be quiet and...
Okay, let's go over to this side. Let's start off with Supervisor King. Do you have, like, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a few.
Okay.
On the Christiansburg schools. When we first started talking about that, ours, they was asked us for $265. And I think the email we got for replacing officers, what we pay ours, this deputies, was $202,900. Is that correct?
I think that includes only salary and benefits and did not include their equipment costs. That's correct.
Salaries, yes.
I just want to bring this up and put it out here on the floor so everybody could think about it. If we, if we could work with Christiansburg Town Council, you know, the, the sheriff and the chief police out of Christiansburg come in front of us, said what they was doing now is working good. Both of them said it's working good. So, I think, my opinion, I think we should work with Christiansburg Town Council to get their police officers back in the schools. I think the students and the staff are used to seeing them officers in the school, and they have a good relationship with them. I think if we offered them the $202,900 that they would accept it and put their officers back in there. Number two is, they said that they, they was not going to charge us for the vehicles. I think in our, thank some of these questions that we sent out, the vehicles, we'd have to buy five new vehicles. Right?
Yes, we did include the cost of one vehicle per officer.
Right. And I, I just want everybody to think about this. The students and the staff at these schools is what we're looking after. And I think, like I said, the officers have a relationship with the students. Not only if we would work with the town of Christiansburg to put their officers back in the schools, it would save all taxpayers money. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I'm curious as to where Blacksburg stands on this whole issue. Do we know?
In my conversations with the town manager, and I think it parallels the conversations that we heard from the chief of law enforcement officers, is Blacksburg is, feels the system they have now is acceptable for them. I will tell you, though, in some conversations between the town managers and I, that it's clearly recognized if we move forward with any contributions to Christiansburg, then I think Blacksburg would ask that they also... then I think Blacksburg would ask that they also receive a contribution to offset the cost that they have for SROs.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing, that if we were to do that just to pay Christiansburg, then Blacksburg rightly would ask for some compensation also. I tend to like the idea of all the SROs in Montgomery County Public Schools under the same leadership, i.e. the Sheriff's Office, instead of splitting it up. And I also don't know what the future would hold. If we were to agree with Christiansburg to pay that money, who's to say that next year, two years from now, they say, you know what, we do want that money for our vehicles? Or they come up with some other ask for more money. So, by us having our own people in there, that's something that I think we can control better. So, that's where I sit.
Okay. Supervisor Demott?
I have a very strong set of opinions on this. And it's hard to, I apologize if this sounds like word babble coming out. First of all, I'm a Blacksburg resident, live in Town Limits. My son just graduated from high school in Blacksburg. I feel very strongly that if Blacksburg Town Council, Blacksburg Leadership wants to keep Blacksburg police officers in the schools in Town Limits, I feel very, very strongly, as a citizen and taxpayer in the town of Blacksburg, that that is what would be far preferable, just because I think it's important for the community's children to have their community's officers in the schools. And this certainly isn't anything at all towards Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, because I think in, if Blacksburg chose not to have Blacksburg police officers in the school, then I would fully support having Montgomery County Sheriff's Deputies in the schools, school resource officers. I view the decision or the question as fairly black or white. Do you want your town's police in your schools? Okay, that's a value judgment. You're using your town's taxpayer revenues to make that value judgment. Then the town is responsible for paying for it. If the town doesn't want those officers in the school, their own officers in the schools, then Montgomery County has said, okay, absolutely, we value the safety and security of the teachers and children in those schools, so we're going to put a Sheriff's Deputy in the school. But I think the decision is not, I think our decision is, do we want to put Sheriff's Deputies in the schools when the towns don't want to pay for their own police to be in the schools? My answer to that is yes. If the town wants their own police in the school, I absolutely think that that's, as a non-police officer, I absolutely think it's the best method of accomplishing the goals of a school resource officer program. It's about safety, it's about security, it's about introducing children to law enforcement in a very non-threatening, friendly environment. There's a whole lot of good that comes out of it. So, I fully support the request as it's presented. But I will very strongly support Blacksburg, the town of Blacksburg's decision with regards to their own officers. If they want them in the schools, then I absolutely support that. I don't think that we should be paying Christiansburg, to have Christiansburg police officers in the school. If we're paying, we should be paying for our own people in those schools.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Supervisor Bone?
I have a couple of questions. How many officers does Christiansburg have in the schools now?
Three. Three is what they told us.
And they felt like three was sufficient to do whatever?
I can't make a judgment on that.
The second question is, this first year, that's when you buy the vehicle, but you don't buy a vehicle every year, so that's an ongoing cost that is not there.
That's correct.
But there's maintenance for the vehicle already in the budget? And not this line item?
That's correct too. Yes, that's right. We didn't add vehicle, ongoing vehicle maintenance, but that would be a cost, I think, that could be absorbed in the Sheriff's Budget. That would be, the $55,000 per vehicle would be a one-time cost that could be funded with one-time money. It would not have to be added to the operating budget. But then, it would cycle into the replacement, so we would have to figure out how to do that if they added more to the fleet.
And does Sheriff Parton agree that they have the maintenance in their budget for five more vehicles? Well, you can just nod or shake your head.
Not for that amount of vehicles right now.
Angie, I think you spoke out of turn?
It's my, we have different opinions. It's okay.
I gotcha. Okay.
Not for that amount of vehicles right now.
Not for ongoing maintenance. The first year when you buy a vehicle, usually you have warranty and everything else, so you have no maintenance as a general rule that first year.
So, when we pull the amount out next year, we would not necessarily pull the whole $55,000 per vehicle out. But that would go along with the replacement schedule. We'd have to evaluate it at that point.
That's my questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Okay. Supervisor Shepard?
I've said from the beginning, I think if we're going to have, if we're going to pay for deputies in the school, if we're going to pay for officers in the school, they're going, they should be our deputies. And I'm okay with Blacksburg doing their own thing in Blacksburg. And, you know, it's kind of funny, I was sitting here when Mr. Demott was talking about the kids from Blacksburg going to Blacksburg schools, and they ought to have Blacksburg officers in the schools. There's a whole lot of county students in those schools too. So, I don't know if that means anything, but I think the number that we put in Christiansburg is what we need to decide today and figure out what's going to happen with Blacksburg in the future, if they even want anything to happen.
Okay. Sheriff Blevins?
Yes, I was, I agree with Supervisor Demott and Supervisor Shepard. If we're going to pay for officers in the school systems, they need to be deputies. I support, if the town of Blacksburg wants to keep their officers in their schools and pay for it, I support that completely. I would like to see school resource officers in every school. Obviously, as I understand, as I agree and know that this Board is committed to safety, that is a priority about public safety and keeping our kids safe. I do have concerns about that there are six schools in the Christiansburg Strand. That includes the alternate school as well. And I think we're, we may need the seven officers, just to make sure that we are covering the six schools. And we will need, you know, just like we heard from our EMS, we need to be able to have officers, school resource officers, that can cover when deputies take their vacation time, sick time, whatever, you know, whatever, you know, they need a day off to make sure that we have coverage. Going forward, if the town of Blacksburg decided that they would not want their officers in, and they would want the school, the Board of Supervisors to pay for the Sheriff's Office, I can see, whatever we offer to one town, we would need to offer to the other town as well. But I would completely support if the town of Blacksburg wants to keep their officers in, that I'm fine with that. But I'd like to see school resource officers in every school. And we've already heard preliminary from the school board, that that is a top priority from the parents, community, and staff, is having a dedicated school resource officer in each school. I'm also concerned about making sure there's coverage, in case there are days, vacation time, those type of things. I'm also concerned about hearing the school board talk about having officers at sporting events and activities to make sure that we have coverage. But if we're going to pay, it needs to be our deputies in the schools. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I have a couple of things. As you guys know, I've been wanting a school resource officer in every school for years and years and years, and I'm going to keep on keeping on on that one, even though we're taking baby steps, just like we're doing with EMS. Same thing, we're going to get there one day. But in the meantime, I do have a concern that I shared with Supervisor King earlier, that if we were to pay the town of Christiansburg for their officers, that sort of sets a precedent for asking for us to pay for other town employees. And I don't know if that would happen or not, but it could. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. And then, since this is impacting the Sheriff's Office, I would like for the Sheriff, Sheriff Parton, to come up and if there's anything that we need to be aware of. I think that Sheriff Blevins was sort of getting to the point of the six officers in the Christiansburg schools, and I don't know how that all works, but if you'd like to come up and just give us some input, that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Am I taking the ball here?
Yep, I'm sorry, it's yours.
Yeah, I mean, I can just go ahead while you're taking the ball and just say that I support what has been discussed tonight. You know, with, yeah. But I know you have some concerns.
So Supervisor King, I'm going to give you a heads up. You're not going to like what I've got to say.
Uh-oh.
That's a big ask of the Sheriff's Office. And we will do whatever it takes to support the Board, and you know we will take care of those kids and that staff in every school, if that's what needs to happen. Five is not going to cut it, and there's no need to take this on if we're going to do it halfway. At a minimum, we're going to have to have seven, and one of those seven needs to be a supervisory position. What you're asking us to do is basically double our support services division that we have now. And along with that, I would ask for a clerical position to take care of all of those 18 folks, counting the supervisors. I can't put any more on the clericals tab that I have now. I don't have enough now. If we can't have one in every school, I don't know why we're doing it. Because if one school is left out, heaven help us, if that's where the problem is. The reason for another supervisor is, is because I've got one supervisor now handling all eight county schools as spread out as they are. We're talking about adding another six. At a minimum, seven people needs to be the order of the day, to make it, to make it happen and to do it right. I can't remember who mentioned the after or extracurricular activities.
Oh, Sheriff Blevins.
But right now, at a Christiansburg High School football game, there are two Christiansburg officers there. There are lots of sporting events where we would like to have two officers there. And the public school system, over the past couple of years, has cut back on security at some of their extracurricular activities. And I haven't talked to Dr. Breagan about that, but getting to know him like I have, I am sure that he is going to want us at those activities. So, and to do that, we need man and woman power. So, that's the reason we need the seven. And the other thing is, this is a biggie. If you all were to decide to do that, there can be no time requirement slash ask of us as to when we can make that happen. We can move as fast as we can, but I got to tell you, school resource officers are a different breed. And they're a totally different animal, and they're hard to find. So, and I can tell you in-house, I know I don't have any more right now.
Could you comment on how long the training process is for a school resource officer after they want to become one?
So, the Department of Criminal Justice Services just tweaked their requirements. So, an SRO officer would have to have two years' experience, which basically the Chiefs and I would, we do that anyway. There's no way we'd ever throw a new officer or deputy in a school. Then there is SRO furthering education after that. So, that's a week, two weeks, I think. But that's after someone has already had that time.
Okay. And a supervisor position that you're talking about, the cost of that, would it be higher than what we've shown here for one officer?
It would be a sergeant's position, and I do not remember the grade.
It would be higher. We can calculate that for you.
Okay. All right. All right. So, we have that clarification. So, let's go back over to this side. Looking down here, do you all have any questions? All right, let's start, okay, let's start with super. Do you have one also?
I did. It was, I already knew the answer to it, but he just, he just answered it.
Oh, okay. All right. And then Supervisor Bone and then Demott.
Did Christiansburg Town Council say that they weren't going to fund extracurricular activities? Is that just normal duties for SROs?
The only comment that I'm aware of is it was related to the school resource officers. I haven't heard anything about.
I was just using the football game as an example. Christiansburg has two officers at the football games.
But we don't know if they will continue to have them there?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I guess that would depend on further discussions.
The school board pays for those separately for the extracurricular activities. It's not included as the SRO program.
Okay. So, five SROs don't cover all the schools, but I'm assuming like one covers CES and CPS? Or, because I thought you said that there are really seven?
There are six. We actually did not take into account Montgomery Central. That's what happened. There are six. We were trying to follow the model that the county has now in the unincorporated portions of the county to have one officer at each school. We should have included six.
Six plus two is eight.
Plus one.
One, yeah. He's asking for seven. One more resource officer and then a supervisor.
And a clerk. And a clerk.
And support, and a support services person.
Clerk cost, do you know?
Would the clerk be full-time? Are you thinking?
I would assume so.
The admin person? Yeah.
Okay, so we need a, yeah, we need a cost on that. Okay.
So, we're talking about seven officers, not, I mean, SROs, not five. Is that what we're talking about?
Seven. Six plus one supervisor, who would obviously be SRO qualified.
So, why six? Because one's not going to be at Montgomery Central? Or?
There are six schools, including Montgomery Central.
Oh, including. Okay, I apologize. I wasn't getting the numbers as we were. So, six plus a supervisor plus a clerk?
Well, to clarify it for the audience, there's Montgomery Central, Christiansburg High School, Christiansburg Middle, Falling Branch Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, and Christiansburg Elementary. So, if you add that all together, it's six.
Six plus two is eight. Okay. Thank you.
Bellevue is in the county. Correct.
Right. All right. Anything else? All right. Supervisor Demott, did you have a question, comment?
I do have a question, and I'm a little hesitant to ask you, because I don't want to put you on the spot. But do you have an opinion that you feel comfortable giving about working? I know that the Chiefs and your office, all of you collaborate on a lot of different initiatives for the for the community.
Yes.
Do you have an opinion about whether that can continue if we have SROs everywhere but Blacksburg? Do you, how do you view that idea?
The chiefs and I have had numerous conversations. We all decided that this obviously was out of our pay grade and between the elected bodies.
Clever, clever, okay.
And unfortunately, or I should say this too, and that's, I hate to call it a placeholder, but again, I wanted to put something in the budget that would have funding to give this board some options, because I knew that it was gonna be a big topic for discussion.
I appreciate the way that you've advocated for your staff and for your need for full staffing. I hear you loud and clear. One of the questions that I wrote down, I knew you would answer it at some point, was do we need a supervisor? Or who is supervising this, and how is their capacity? What's that look like? So you've answered that very clearly. I guess my my final question would be if the town of Christiansburg, I guess this is more of a statement, I'm not gonna ask you to answer this. If the town of Christiansburg is removing their SROs from the schools, it sounds like there might be a couple of trained SROs in the community. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Fidjikowski, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. We were talking earlier about vehicles, five extra vehicles. I guess $55,000 is the cost of a patrol vehicle, brand new?
Yes, sir.
So you would work that in your rotation. I mean, there wouldn't be a need for a brand-new vehicle to be driven back and forth to a school.
So just, so you all know, the $55,000 is not how much a vehicle costs us. But as Michael said, everything continues to rise. The cost of the vehicle is probably anywhere from $41,000 to $43,000 on a state contract bid price. The $55,000 comes from everything else that we add to it.
Right, right.
And by the way, we buy the cheapest. So.
I hate to hear that, but.
And we have a good cooperative agreement with the town of Christiansburg for radio service and all that. That is an area that we cooperate with them on to, and it saves us money.
But to answer your question.
Yes.
Yes, sir. The 55 is for an outfitted vehicle.
Because I've seen you squeeze every extra year out of vehicles that you can, and I think that's, the purpose is to move them into non-critical areas when it's just transportation, more or less, not response. But, okay. I did wanna clarify, when I was talking about the sheriff's office supervising all SROs, I do accept and agree with you Supervisor Demont on the Blacksburg issue. And I, and I know that that probably didn't sound like I was agreeing, but I do agree with that. I am in favor of doing what you're requesting, the seven. But, just like Vice Chair Biggs mentioned, that we have done this kinda like the same way we've done emergency services, we've done it a little bit at a time. Everything was working fine, we heard that from not just your lips, but from the two chiefs, that everything that we had set up was working fine. Now that we're having to relook at everything, I agree. To get so close and not go the extra doesn't make any sense to me, so I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor King?
I appreciate you coming in, I really do. I don't have no questions, just my concern, I didn't want this board to step on you and the chiefs, you know what I'm saying? I just didn't want us to step on y'all's toes if y'all working together, because I know y'all work together real well. I do appreciate it.
It's really not gonna matter what happens with all of this.
Okay.
The chiefs and myself will continue on, just like we always have, and we're gonna take care of business.
I appreciate it.
It really doesn't matter if it's in town or in the county.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Sheriff Blevins?
Sheriff, thank you for answering the questions. Board, I just, we just heard from EMS on justifications, and now the sheriff's coming up here answering our questions of justifications of why it's important that we do have proper coverage, and that if we move forward, we need to do this right. One of our main goals is public safety, and we wanna be proactive, and it's just in the last couple of weeks, we've seen how great the value of having a school resource officer dedicated to those schools can be. So I do appreciate the sheriff coming forward and saying that at a minimum, seven is needed, that's six to cover the schools and one supervisor. I do understand that he's, that his department will be taking on double the liability, double the manpower and responsibility, and so I feel that we need to fund this, baby steps. I also hear him say that, you know, it's going to take time, and I do appreciate that, because if we're gonna do it, we wanna do it correctly. And then, just like EMS, just move forward and be as proactive as we can. So I do want to move forward with those seven deputies for SROs, and also look at a clerical person to make sure that it's done correctly. And we've heard from the public, they want, parents want school resource officers in every school, and I think this would be a positive way to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm in agreement also with exploring the seven and the clerical and getting a cost estimate, because we're, you know, we're sitting here tonight, you know, what are we gonna do as far as advertising the tax rate? And there are other questions, I'm sure, that are gonna come up about the budget, but.
I just, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page again, because I know another, a lot of numbers are bouncing around. We're actually talking a total of six sworn SROs and one administrative, for a total of seven positions.
Plus a sergeant.
Thank you.
Six, six SROs plus a supervisor SRO.
Seven, I'll catch you.
Clerical.
Thank you. So it's actually eight.
If you're counting the clerical position.
Eight FTEs, yes. Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page with that, too.
But we can get the cost of that correct.
We'll send you that in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else have a further question for our sheriff?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Some years ago, there was talk about using part-time SROs, and by taking retirees, recent retirees, not old guys like me. Where does that stand now? Was that whole plan dropped, or was it adopted in some other way that didn't work for us? Do you know?
I do not know if it was adopted somewhere else, but I know that I haven't heard anything else about it.
And Supervisor Fidjikowski, I'll mention one of the other questions that came up when we were talking about the community resource officer, the position that we were talking here in the government center, there was, Vice Chair Biggs mentioned it, I think Sheriff Blevins, several board members mentioned, well, could you do that with part-time folks instead of having one full-time and one part-time? The answer to that is yes, you could, and the type officer you were describing might be the perfect fit for that type position. It's not gonna save, that was one of the questions that got asked, I think, it'll save, it'll save some money, it won't save a ton of money. But yes, I mean, when we've talked about that opportunity here, that's exactly what we've thought about, is someone who may be recently retired that works well with the citizens and would enjoy doing that.
I think that it would save, we've got that information, $5,324 if you had three part-time.
Well, you also would not need, for this community resource officer, you wouldn't need vehicles. This would be a place that person would come to work, so.
We included one vehicle, I believe the sheriff requested that, we have one.
For the FT, yes.
Because they would travel between our buildings, so they would need to be able to get from one location to the other, is that correct?
If I could address that real quick, since that's being talked about.
I threw it out there, yes, I did.
That, I believe that was actually my suggestion. We really don't need the full-time position, and to be honest with you, we probably wouldn't find it. With the VRS rules, someone who's retired cannot step into a full-time VRS position. Finding three part-time positions, which I think would be much more flexible, between the three of them, to cover functions like this, and save a little bit of money. I'm pretty sure I have two that are ready to go and still law enforcement certified. And I'm almost positive I could find a third.
That's a, that's a great suggestion, absolutely.
But definitely a vehicle that they would have here.
Any other questions for our sheriff? Thank you so much for the information and for letting us know how you would envision this working.
Thank you all for all you do and for supporting us.
And, Madam Vice Chair and Board, you know, again, the reason for bringing these two topics up right off the bat this evening is, you know, the purpose of tonight's meeting is at the end, to establish an advertised tax rate and budget. I knew these were issues that several folks had asked about, and I wanted that opportunity for discussion. There is, you know, I will say there's always flexibility in a budget, if the board says we'd rather do this than that, we can take a look at that. I do feel with the 73 cents that we've proposed, if the board wants to make some slight tweaks, I think we'll be able to do that. Again, a penny on the tax rate is a million, $175,000, so a penny is $1,175,000. So, even though when we talk about an adjustment or $200,000, $300,000, that, that's a, that's still a lot of money, but in the scheme of things, it's about a quarter of a penny, so.
Okay. Well, let's move ahead then and and address folks' questions about the budget in general or things that they might be concerned about. I know I have a couple, let's start, let's go back over here. Supervisor King, do you have anything else that you're particularly concerned about in the budget? Okay. That's why I thought we started over here.
Yeah, just got a couple of questions on the emails that sent in, and you sent the response today.
Mm-hmm.
On where it says other public safety. You got it pulled up? Okay. It says, "Does a savings exist in a fiscal year 23 budget of $106,033 fiscal year 23 operation budget from Shawsville Rescue operating, and $60,000 for equipment that was placed on hold?" Then it says, where you responded, it says the $106,033 that can be reallocated. However, the fire and rescue department requested additional funding of approximately $100,000, and the Fire and Rescue Commission has recommended that Shawsville Rescue Squad funds be reallocated to cover these requests. I didn't see no request in the budget book, maybe I was looking in the wrong place. My understanding, if I looked at it right, none of them got an increase in operation budget.
Mm-hmm.
I think Ellison Fire Department got one-time $6,000.
Michael's coming forward, maybe while we're all digging, he might be able to bounce on that, you or Brad.
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but when we had our budget meeting with the Fire and Rescue Commission, we had requests come in from a few different departments for increasing their operational budgets for inflationary costs and to keep up with the increase in call volume. Those requests totaled roughly $89,000 after everything was said and done. It was over $100,000, but we were able to work through some capital stuff to move money around that currently exists to fill those gaps. I believe, without the number in front of me, it was approximately $89,000 with the requests.
Supervisor King, the reason we didn't include that in the budget document is because the ti, at the time the budget document was developed, we didn't know what was gonna happen with Shawsville Rescue Squad, and as things have developed further, we are more certain about them not needing those funds, but we had not recommended that they be reallocated because we didn't know what the status would be.
Well, could we get, could y'all send us what each department asked for? All right, then it says, on the same paragraph down below, it says, "$60,000 for equipment results in one-time savings from the 1.5 cent set aside for fire and rescue. Remaining capital balance for fire and rescue equipment have historically been reallocated to other fire and rescue departments."
When we put the penny and a half into the capital fund for fire and rescue equipment replaces, replacements, if those funds are not spent in one year, we roll them into the next year, and then the Fire and Rescue Commission makes recommendations about those, and they get reallocated to different projects that do come before you for your approval.
Just my concern, that one and a half cent, and I know they asked for more this year for, because trucks and ambulances are higher, more. Should that money not stay there for the following year to add to the fire and rescue fleet?
That's what that means, really.
Oh, I thought you said allocate it somewhere else.
No, 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 I'm sorry. It means to be reallocated within those funds. It will go into the, kinda like a reserve that's in the fire and rescue capital. It would not be reallocated to a different area.
Not in, yeah, in future years, it'll be used, but not for capital.
Will be reallocated in future years for fire and rescue capital, not to a different place. It would stay in fire and rescue capital. But it would go to a different vehicle.
For vehicles?
Yes.
That's correct, that's correct.
All right. If you can give me them figures of what everybody asked for, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Luke?
We actually have them up now, if you'd like those.
Okay.
So, these are the recurring requests. Fire departments asked for $30,000, that was just from the Christiansburg Fire Department. The Rescue Squads asked for approximately $51,000.
Christiansburg Rescue?
That was over all four volunteer departments, excluding Shawsville.
Oh, all of them together?
Yes, so we had $13,000 worth of requests from Blacksburg Rescue, $30,000 worth of requests from Christiansburg Rescue, $2,000 worth of requests from Long Shot McCoy, and $6,000 worth of requests from Rhino Rescue.
$2,000 for Long Shot? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
We'll email you those tomorrow, so you can have them written out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Demont?
We'll do a subject change here. I have just two questions that should be, I think these are gonna be pretty simple yes or no answers. On page 107 of the budget book, talking about revenue sharing, is the $32,000 additional revenue sharing, can that pretty much be summed up as the hotel adjacent to Motor Mile Park?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay. And then, ooh, I'm not switching subjects as much as I thought. Page 117, $100,000 in soft billing for insurance recovery revenue added to emergency services. What are the hurdles to getting us to have a, having a soft billing program? Sorry to keep on, we're getting your steps tonight.
Oh, that's a good question.
Michael's getting his steps in. Really, one of the big one is our call volume that, for our trucks that we have in service right now, doesn't, is not attractive to a vendor in and of itself, it's just not enough call volume for a vendor to take that on. So what we've done is we've worked collaboratively with Blacksburg, the town of Blacksburg, which they're starting the same program, and we're currently working on a combined RFP that will work with the town to put that out, that'll allow us to do our billing as well as the town. And then there's a lot of, lot of things that have to be decided about how the money's collected, where it goes once it's collected, between paid, volunteer, all the different int. where it goes, once it's collected, between paid volunteer, all the different entities that are involved in this, and how we kind of do that administratively. We do have a young lady that we hired some time ago that is overseeing that for us, who is working on that, and the RFP is set to go out. I'm not sure if it's out yet or not.
Waiting for Blacksburg's approval?
Yeah, waiting for the town's approval. And once we get that, get that out, we look to start that July is our timetable, to start that beginning of the fiscal year. Would say that, you know, if you compare what maybe some other localities are collecting versus what we're projecting to collect, and you may say, well, there's, it's a big difference, but a lot of that is our call volume. We may be like a quarter or 20% of their call volume. And so obviously, they're going to be collecting exponentially more than what we will.
And I appreciate the care that was taken in giving that estimate. I think that it's much better to have a very conservative estimate and meet it than to need the funds and not have enough, especially on a new program. I'm thankful to hear that that, it sounds like that that's very much well on the way. And with the next budget year, we would be able to factor that in. That's all that I had, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Byrne?
Mr. Meadows, you said there's no fluff in their budgets, but what about our budget?
You know, as I always say, a budget is a series of estimates. And so I do not think there is any fluff in the budget. Everything in the budget is justified. It's also a matter of priorities. If this board, for example, with the SRO positions decides they want to fund additional positions for SROs, then we will huddle, come back and say, well, here's how you can address that. Here's some areas that you may look to reduce in order to do that. We spend a great deal of time going through every line in that budget. There is no fluff in the budget.
We'll also continue to look at revenue estimates as we move forward and see how those trends play out as well and update you with that.
Does anybody know our inflation rate for our part of the budget? Not, not year-over-year, budget to budget, but actual.
Did our budget increase?
Yes.
How much has our budget increased because of inflation? How much has inflation affected our twenty-three budget? If we were doing twenty-three for twenty-four, just what part of the eight point seven is inflation showing up?
We'll have to try to figure that out exactly. That's a huge question.
Mark's going to give it a stab.
Here's what I can tell you about inflation. If you're looking at all categories of inflation, or all categories of goods, the inflation rate right now is running around six and a half percent. That's aggregate, and that is an average of all consumable items. If you look at individual areas, and I don't have it in front of me tonight, but I could get you that information. Certain categories are well above six and a half percent. You have certain areas like fuel that are up fourteen to twenty percent, depending upon the type. Electric is up well above that six and a half percent. So it's hard to pick individual things and say, well, what is inflation causing? It's causing havoc on all kinds of things, but in total, in aggregate, you're looking at six and a half percent. The budget that we propose to you is a little over eight percent. So you can factor six and a half percent of that is, is part of that eight percent that you're pushing forward. Plus, you have a lot of new programs that are part of this thing, too. Most likely, if you were to put, if we were to put a budget in front of you that addressed inflationary increases and addressed all the new things that we need to do, it would be more than the eight percent increase that we have in the proposed budget going forward.
So in the, I'm on, I'm just working from what you read, Mr. Meadows, the last time at the meeting. So on page two, third paragraph, it says, the schools are definitely going to get their five percent, but they're expecting an additional two percent, and we're waiting. Do we have that two percent set aside?
No, we have the.
Our part of the five percent, I get that, right?
We don't have the entire five percent set aside. We have proposed four million dollars, which they now believe they need six point one. So I think their board would have to vote and decide what areas would be reduced if that is the amount that went forward. I know they do not have a state calc tool yet that has been revised for the calculation error that was made. And so we need to wait for that to figure out all the answers about the five percent increase versus the seven percent increase and what those costs will be.
So, you know, just like in previous years, we've always wanted to make sure that they get all of the five percent and the two percent. No matter what happens at the state level, we have to know now so that we can approve our tax rate. But then we can reduce it, you know, if, if it's not going to require us to, you know, fully fund what worst-case scenario is going to be.
I don't think the schools can tell us today how much they would need to fund seven percent.
So what do we do when it comes back and it's worse than what we have in our budget?
We would have to address that at the time. The seven percent has not been.
We can use one-time money to do that, or no?
Well, the short answer is you can. Fiscally, that's not a.
I know.
Good idea. You know, unfortunately, this is another example of the General Assembly leaving us holding.
We're always caught in this situation, one thing or another at budget time, I get it. But, I mean, I wouldn't want to not fund free money from the, you know, from the state.
Which, at this point, we don't, you know, we've, we've proposed seven percent in the county budget for employees because that's what we understand the state is also doing. They threw that in in the last round for the schools. And so, you know, when the schools came forward with their budget request, it's five percent because at that point in time, that's what's known. Now, if they step, if they're required to step up to seven, there will have to be some discussion. You know, one of the, again, one of the things, recognizing there were a few questions that would still need to be answered is that, as I keep referring back to that one penny that we set aside from the capital. While I go, I was talking about, it's a lot of money. It's, it's a million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's not likely to fund an additional two percent for the schools, I don't think. I can't, the salaries are, what, eighty-seven percent of your budget? So it's a, it's going to take a chunk to fix that.
It's another penny, or a penny and a quarter or something like that.
My position from this seat is if the state is going to do that, then they need to pony up the funds to cover that difference.
We don't get to choose what the state chooses to do.
We don't, we don't, but at the end of the day.
So I am going to propose that we, like, advertise at seventy-four, seventy-four and a half just so that we don't give away free money at the state level because that'll buy us time until we have to approve the budget. We should know a lot more about what the state is going to do. But gosh forbid, we wouldn't want to, you know, what do you, go through the whole cycle of advertising again if we're short. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah. So can we use our best guess tonight so that we can, like, is it one and a half? Extra more pennies, or one and a quarter? Extra more pennies?
This would be a time that we should ask Dr. Bragan to come forward.
Yeah, I think, I think the key question, Dr. Bragan and Dr. Whitaker, is for every one percent on your salary side for an increase, how much does that take to fund, if you know that?
Sure. Well, first thing, in fact, I just want to thank all you for having that discussion about the SROs. As a school system, we're very appreciative of your commitment to school safety and security. So thank you for entertaining all that and ensuring our students and staff are safe. When we look at the numbers, if you look at what we proposed in the initial budget for the five percent increase across the board, it came out to five point three million dollars approximately. So if you divide that by five and then times it by two, I believe it comes out to two point one four million approximately. Is that right, Dr. Whitaker?
So it's about two pennies if.
Yeah. So that's what I'm going to ask for us to consider tonight just so that in the end, we could reduce it, depending on what the state decides to do. Because we don't have an extra two-point-whatever million dollars in.
No.
Ongoing revenue, so.
No, I imagine when we revisit the revenue estimates, we'll have some growth. But I, I would be shocked if we had two more pennies of growth.
Thank you. On page three of that, of what you read, Mr. Meadows, you, you talk about the increases, the percentage increases, this is the chart, of what the school budget, school budget and our budget. Am I looking at that right?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am. It's total budget, then how much is the total budget, and then how mu, excuse me, increase year-over-year of the total county budget? And then it also shows the year-over-year increase in the education component, including the debt service and the school capital.
So when I look at that, you know, you look at 2020, they got the same amount as the county. 2021, they got a percent more. 2022, the same. 2023, two less, and 2024, one less. It doesn't take long for a budget to feel exceptionally squeezed when a percent or two percent or three percent over a couple of years. I was wondering if it was because of the school debt service or, like, is that outside of their budget, or?
It is included in their budget.
Right.
The total budget, the nine percent increase in twenty-four, I don't think that you can, we would have to break that down for you a different way to show you what proportion of that goes to the general fund because the two hundred and thirty-nine million dollars is not all for the general fund. So the nine percent is not necessarily how much the general fund is increasing. If you remember the night of the presentation, I guess that was only a week ago. If you pull out the EMS, paid EMS staff, the count, the new dollars are split equally between the county general fund and the school operating fund.
Gotcha, that's exceptionally helpful.
And that includes putting the school resource officers on the county side, not on the school side.
Okay, perfect, thank you for doing that for me. On page four, when you talk about the Auburn Park, it has nothing to do with the gymnasium or field house or anything like that, okay. On the last bullet there, seven hundred and fifty thousand for capital maintenance projects. How are we doing with our maintenance, just fine, you know?
Still got a lot of work to do. I mean, all you've got to do is walk through several of our buildings.
Sure, okay.
I mean, you know, seven fifty a year is a hefty number. Roof on this building was, what, a million plus? I mean, it.
It's amazing.
Yes.
And I think this question kind of dovetails from Supervisor King's question because I'm not super familiar with that whole emergency fire stuff. As our volunteers decrease, we're offsetting the costs for the volunteering population, but that's going directly to the paid.
No, that if we decrease the amount that we're providing in the, in the budget for Shawsville Rescue, we had, it still included that in the volunteer pool of funds. We had not offset the, that with the increase. The one point four million dollars is without offsetting that.
I really would like someone to explain the, the state grant of two hundred and ten thousand funds three full-time positions for the victim witness grant program.
I can explain that a little bit.
I didn't get it.
The Commonwealth Attorney's Office receives a victim witness grant annually that's about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And historically, I think they've had that for over twenty years. But we don't include that in the general fund. We appropriated it at the beginning of the year because it does follow a fiscal year. There are three employees that do that, do those jobs as victim witness coordinators, and it's a vital program for the county. And we discussed whether or not if that funding would away, which we do not anticipate it will go away. But if it did, would we think that that's a priority to fund? And we discussed that, and as staff decided that it was something that we would want to maintain because of the vital importance of it. So we pulled that into the budget this year.
I appreciate that.
So we're including the revenue and the cost.
And then the next paragraph about New River Community College. Even with today's email and additional information, I'm still confused. Why, you know, I think it's an incredible program. I think what they're doing to offset the need for the funding is incredible. It just seems like they have a lot of extra of our money that they're not using.
Explain that as well. The way that program works is the students apply through the school, through New River Community College. And then as they complete a semester, if they maintain the criteria to receive the funding, the community college invoices the county for that portion of the tuition that we need to offset. Generally, the first, the fall semester is a little bit less funding requested than the spring semester, but it averages out to about four hundred thousand dollars a year. That's how much it has been. We only fund what they need, so the excess rolls back to our general fund. So there's been about a hundred thousand dollars since the program got started that has returned to the general fund. And I know that they send forward every student that qualifies. And I think that there is a little bit of funding that is there that hasn't been spent historically, but we don't know what's going to happen with that as students continue to evolve and embrace the program. The number of students that have participated has increased. But we do not pay them five hundred thousand dollars and then they.
But it's in our budget. I was wondering if we just reduce it to four fifty, you know? And just because we always get a hundred thousand, it's going to be rare that it's going to be four hundred and fifty either. We'll still get a little money back.
I don't, as their inflationary costs increase, I don't know what their tuition rates will do. I know they're state-regulated, but you could certainly, that's the board's prerogative to lower that funding.
Because it's not a pure requirement from New River Community, I mean, they asked for the five hundred, but.
They did.
That was the initial, when, when we established the program several years ago, that was the initial estimate, and so we, that was the ask.
I kind of think about it as self-funding insurance. It's sort of like the same kind of concept. So if you see, like, there's your overage of a hundred thousand for five years straight, you're like, you know, inflation's going to be no more than ten percent, and that's not a hundred thousand.
That's right. And if you reduce that, and then one year they needed more funding, we could come to you and have it appropriated out of special, out of general contingencies, and then pick that up the next year.
One thing about that, I think, if I remember right, and I assume they're still doing this, is they use donated dollars first, and they don't ever know what that's going to be.
That's true.
And I think that's why we did the five hundred thousand, just to give them a buffer if they didn't get the donations.
Again, if every year it's been a hundred thousand, that's over twenty, that's like almost twenty-five percent above every year. And, you know, and we know that.
It's a lot easier to take it away than it is to give it back to them, I'll tell you that.
Anyway, I think that there's at least twenty-five thousand there. But anyway, I mean, I know it's, it's not a lot of money there. So as far as your two proposed initiatives about reassessment. So, as far as your two proposed initiatives about reassessment and, um, the PSA, you don't mention anything about cost of doing that. I'm assuming you're just absorbing that in your-
With reassessment, all it would be in the upcoming year is permission to study that and bring some information back to the board. Any cost associated with that, we would be looking at in future budgets, not in this year's budget.
Okay.
And same with the PSA. I don't anticipate any cost with that. That is more just an administrative discussion and realignment of how we're doing some things internally. I wouldn't anticipate a cost with that at all.
And then the next paragraph, um, I always like using fiscally responsible versus fiscally conservative. So, I know I won't win that vote, but, um, I still would like to mention that. Um, and then the first paragraph on the last page, um, the extra $3.1 million for outside agencies and organizations. Um, you know, there are people watching or who will watch this. If you can point them to the right pages of what makes up that $3.1 million, um, I think that would be helpful for everybody.
That starts on page 239 of the budget.
And so, when they look at it, what do they look for as far as what is the part for this agency? It is part of the $3.1 million?
It details each agency in that section, so they're grouped by, um, what kind of agency they are.
Can you just say the number or page again, so that we can use an example?
239.
239.
Okay.
There's a ta- there's a tab in the budget. I don't know if they can see that, if they look, um, using the online version, it's 910 other agencies.
The $3.1 million is-
That's on page 240. That, and then beginning on page 241, it details each agency and how much funding we're recommending.
Because I don't see the $3.1 million on page 240.
It says, um, expend-
Go ahead, Angie, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Oh, I see, the 3.1. And then if you look at, uh, Community Health Center, where do you see their part of the 3.1? The 52?
It go- it's a human service agency. If you see the subcategory at the top of that page, of page 241, and then-
It's the 30994.
It's 900, right, $30,944 is included in the Human Services Agency total on page 240 of $947,690.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Um, let's move to Supervisor Fidjikowski and his concerns.
Um, I just wanted some clarification on the ACE thing again. I think I heard you say, Angie, that the money that is budgeted, that isn't spent, rolls over into general fund, and then I heard you say, "We could take it out of general contingency fund." So, is that where it goes? We're not, we're not spending this as carryover money, are we?
No.
The $100,000 that is left at the end of each year does, it, it is not used as carryforward money. You know the cash sheet that we present to you that has the cash at the end of it that you have available to spend. It does increase that number, so as it accumulates, we have from time to time moved that out of the general fund to other funds to fund capital projects and to shave the debt for the school operating debt, but it doesn't get carried over automatically. So, the, um, comment I made about moving funds out of contingencies would be, if you decrease the amount in the budget to $400,000, and then the ACE program costs $450,000 in that year, we would transfer the money out of general contingencies to cover it in that year, and then we would increase the budget for the following year.
Okay, 'cause by my calculations, if it all went into one fund, that'd be about a million dollars over the five-year period, so.
Could you, it would be $100,000 per year, right?
Uh, that's, if, if we budgeted in five years, $2.5 million, and we've only spent $1.5 million, that's a million dollars.
We have, with the $1.5 million is as of today, it doesn't have the second billing for the, um, for fiscal year, fiscal year '23.
Okay.
I anticipate it's gonna be about $100,000 this year as well.
Okay. Is it, is there any way that, that, I, I know it changes every year, but like you said, it stays under $400,000. Um, it seems like we've been in an, in that program long enough to know that there's only gonna be so many students that take advantage of this, and shockingly, I've actually heard parents say, "Well, my child doesn't wanna do that." I said, "But it'll save you money," and they said, "Yeah, but that's not what my child wants." So, they skip it, um, which I'm amazed, but, uh, that's just me. Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Okay, and Supervisor Shepherd?
Um, I don't have any questions, just a clarification. So, I heard a couple of things, and I think I heard what I think I heard. Mr. Meadows say that 73 cents would cover the seven SROs and the EMS, uh, new employees with some tweaking with other stuff if we need to.
If the board has a desire to see numbers with seven versus five SROs and the administrative position the sheriff mentioned, I think with some rearranging in the budget, we can keep that at 73 cents. Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard you say. That's all.
Okay, Chair Blevins?
Um, just some clarification. Um, and Ms. Hill and staff, thank you so much for, um, the email answering, um, a lot of my questions. On the opioid abatement fund, am I to understand that they can only be used, and I know that they're not part of this budget, that we have $350,000, um, but they can only be used for abatement purposes as additional funding, not to replace any existing funding? And my question is, for outside services or agencies, um, above their mandated fu- uh, mandated request, could those funds be used there?
They could be used there if they meet the definition required for the opioid abatement program.
Okay, very good. And it, so it would be above the mandate. It, it doesn't have to be something completely new. It could be an existing agency, but they've asked, say, $10,000 more than the mandate, and it does meet the eligibility of the abatement.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That is correct. It just, you know, the word that we hear a lot is non-supplanting. It can't supplant, uh, funding that's already in place.
Okay, all right, very good. And then just a question on page 182, just again for clarification. Um, for the increase from the Sheriff's Compens- Compensation Board of, uh, $339,000 plus, that will, that is also to fund the 7% raise for all county employees, including deputies that would be under that compensation board?
Yes.
This is the revenue side of that, and it, so we would have to fund the 7% pay increase to get this revenue. We would have to fund-
Okay, so that, the- So, the 7% just for clarification would include, um, all the deputies?
The proposed budget includes 7% salary increase for all deputies, yes, ma'am.
All full, okay. And then that would be the revenue that we get if we do that 7%?
Right.
Very good. Um, and thank you guys for answering all of the emails and the questions, um, for us, and I'm sure our supervisors will have additional questions as we move forward. Um, just wanted to, Mr. Meadows asked if it would be appropriate at this time for the board to give consensus on moving forward to explore the PSA and the, um, looking at, um, the reassessment, um, in-house instead of doing it every four years, to do it every two years or so.
Yeah. Uh, Madam Chair, that would be fine. Uh, you know, that was in there as a recommendation, and if there's consensus to spend, you know, basically that's, both those things are gonna be fairly time-consuming, so I didn't wanna, uh, embark on that without having consensus from the board to, to look at those things. So, if there's consensus this evening, that will allow that to keep moving forward. I'm seeing-
And there would be no additional cost at this time, just to explore other than
No, ma'am.
time with the staff.
That's correct. That's correct. No, no funding is needed. Uh, with both those initiatives, uh, staff would come back to you with thoughts and recommendations as to how to move forward.
I, I think-
Vice Chair Biggs, will you?
I, I think this is something we need to have a bigger discussion on before we start mov- moving forward with it.
On both items?
Both items.
Okay, so...
Maybe it could be on the next agenda or one of the agendas moving forward, you know, soon, to at least start the discussion, to, to vet it out, because I agree, if we wanna move forward, the sooner we do it, the better. You know, you'll be able to manage it that much better, so.
All right, so let's add that to our next agenda.
Can we do that?
Okay, um, before I ask my questions, have this, do you all have any other questions? Okay, um, I just had a couple of things. On page 17, it talked about increased insurance cost. Does that mean like all the insurance, or is that health insurance, or is that, or is that just everything? I was just, I was sorta concerned about our health insurance. That's what I wanted to bring it up.
I pushed the button the wrong way. It's, um, those insurance increases are for property and liability coverage. They are not for health insurance. We don't anticipate the need for a health insurance increase. We are very blessed with how our self-insurance program has been going. I don't wanna say anything to, you know,
Right.
jinx that, but there is not an increase for health insurance for county employees in the proposed budget.
Yeah, because we saw that that was an issue within the schools, so.
Right.
All right, so my concern sort of, um, is also, I shared this with Supervisor Bone. Um, first of all, the schools are sort of in limbo even about the money they're gonna get from the state. So, I tried to dig through to see for next fiscal year, since that big mistake was made, and I was trying to dig through to see if I could get any information about what might happen, and, and evidently, no one really knows. It could be that it might be worse than the 1.2 million that they were supposed to get. So, that concerns me. And the other concern is that, um, I'm concerned about the salaries for the school employees because we're, we're sorta covered ourselves over here, but I don't think we've covered, uh, our school folks. Um, and I know the answer is always, "Well, you know, we give them the money and the school board, you know, assigns money, but you have to have enough money to give in the first place." And I'm really concerned that we don't have, um, flexibility, and it's no fault of our staff, um, because they were just going off of what they knew to prepare our budget. But, you know, this, as Mr. Meadows says, this is a no-fluff budget. So, if we want to make sure that we have something to address school needs, we would have to change the advertised tax rate from 73 cents.
Um, if I could add, can I add something to your point?
Yes, uh-huh.
Um, so my point is, I like the 73 cents. I hope that everything works out so that it's gonna be 73 cents, but I wouldn't want to not get the free money from the state if they get additional raises. And an extra two-plus million dollars is a lot to take out of ours or theirs. Um, you know, gosh, I'd hate for us to have to come up with it, but I'd hate for us to not have it to get-
Is it free money, or do we have to match it?
It, we have to match it, but, you know, you don't get it. You don't get it if you don't-
This counted money.
Yeah, 50 cents on the dollar, right?
Yeah.
You're forced to-
I just, I don't want it to, to call it free money is a little-
I don't know how to describe it.
It's a, it's, it's an unfunded mandate.
Exactly, thank you.
Is how you describe it. Um, but it would be, they are giving us X number of dollars, but in order to get those dollars, we have to give X number of, the, the same. So, um, just for anybody listening, there's no free money coming from Richmond to us. It always comes with strings.
And we do bring this up every single year to our state legislators, and it goes nowhere. Now, I'm off my soapbox. Anyone else want, anyone else wants to, to chime in here about what your thinking is while we're in work session? Has this raised any concerns for anyone?
That's why I'd like to propose, since now it sounds like an extra $2 million, you know, 2 cents. Um, so instead of 73, it'd be 75, but I hope that it's 73 or less in the end, you know? But at least we have some flexibility to see how we manage this, because we don't know how to manage it because we, they don't give us any information at this, this point, so.
Do we know for sure that the 2 cents that they talked about would be a 50/50 to us?
We have no idea. We don't think it would be, like, we would, you don't think that we would have to put up 50% of the money, more than 50% of the money. Hopefully, it'll be less, because like what Mr. Meadows is saying is, "I sure hope they're not gonna ask, you know, all the counties for that much money." I do too, because that's really ridiculous, but, uh, 7% raise over the last year is like par for the course, so, you know? And the state has a huge surplus, so hopefully, you know, they will kinda belly up a little bit more than usual for the extra 2%.
And you have to remember that the money they give is only for SOQ positions. And historically, you know, the county school system tries to be fair to all of its employees and give the same kind of raise, and so.
Well, it was the Senate that came up with this extra 2 cents, and I'm not clear as to whether they're proposing 7 cents, which is an extra 2 cents over the 5, or if they're saying, "Okay, we're all good with the 5. Now, we wanna add 2."
Yeah, we have no idea.
And if, but it was a Senate bill, so somebody, it's gotta be somewhere where we could read.
Right, it has to go to committee eventually, and it'll be hashed out, but we're not gonna know that for tonight, you know?
Right, because right, the information I got Friday, the committees weren't talking to each other. So, we're in the same situation that we're always in, where we have to make decisions in the dark, and of course, the school board really has to make decisions in the dark, because they're bringing their budget to us before. So, it's really nothing new. We're always making decisions in the dark and hoping for the best.
And that isn't even to address the calculation there. That's another entire penny.
Right, exactly. The other thing is, last year, we increased our advertised ties tax rate in the hopes that we wouldn't have to increase from what the budget proposal was. And we didn't. We didn't increase it. It, we went with what the, the staff recommended, plus an extra percent or so, extra penny or so, but in the end, it was, yeah, it was. Or maybe that was the year before that.
We did not last year. We, you have before, but not last year.
Right, right. It's just, this is a big question mark. It's a lot of money, you know, this year.
Okay, um, any other comments? Chair Blevins, do you have anything else?
No, I was just gonna do a clarification that last year, we kept the rate at 89 cents. Um, we did not increase that.
Mm-huh, it's been 89 for a while, so. All right, if there, there's no further discussion, we can entertain a motion to go out of work session.
Motion.
For a second? With a second. Sarah, okay. All right, and Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Shepherd?
Aye.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Demontz?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Okay. Okay. Now we're out of work session, and I guess we can entertain a motion. First, we would do the tax rate, right? And because that would.
That determines the budget.
Affect the budget. So entertain a motion for the tax rate for the real estate property tax.
I'd like to make a motion that we advertise 75 cents for the tax rate. And hopefully, we will come in much less than that.
Okay. Is there a second to Supervisor Bone's motion?
I'll second, so we can open discussion.
Okay. Second from Supervisor Demots. All right. Let's have some discussion and let's go, let's start with Supervisor Bone, since you made the motion. I think we, we understand why you made it. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Demots, since you seconded, anything?
I just wanted to open the floor for conversation.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with the tax rate at, at the requested 73. I certainly agree with your point, though, of, we're voting to advertise a tax rate. We're not locking a tax rate. And we've talked a lot about additional expenses and uncertainty tonight. So I would be comfortable with advertising at a higher rate, because as we all well know, if we advertise at 73 and we need more, we cannot go back and advertise again.
The whole process.
Yeah, we'd have to start the whole process all over again. So if we advertise at 75 and adopt at 73, that doesn't slow down the budget train as it were.
All right. Supervisor Shepherd, did you have a comment?
I did. During the last reassessment in 2019, and I'm the one that asked the question about the percentage, it was explained to me by one of the board members at the time that we all agreed not to raise the taxes, but the reassessment gave us a time in which we could attain more revenue. At that time, the revenue increase was 7.5%. And the 3 cents is 4.3%. So I, I would be okay with a little more advertised. I don't know if it'll, if I ponder would be willing to go higher or not.
Okay. Let's go over here to this side. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I, I understand the, you know, why you want to set it higher, but I, I think 73 is where I'm at.
Okay. And Supervisor King?
I understand what Supervisor Bone's saying, but I would never vote for a 5 cent increase. So I'd go with 3, just for advertisement.
Okay. And Chair Blevins?
I will go with the advertised of 73 cents and not raise it higher. Understand uncertainties. But some of these things are not, they're kind of out of our hand. We don't know what the state's going to do. The calculation error. I'm hoping that they will fix that or hold it harmless. But 73 cents, and that's what the proposed of the, was proposed, I'll go 73 cents for the advertised. This is just the advertised, which means for citizens that whatever we vote on as the advertised rate can go lower, but it would not go higher.
Okay. I can support this 75 cents. And the reason being is that it does give us flexibility, as Supervisor Bone mentioned. If we did find ourselves needing to come back, then we would have to start the whole process over, which also would affect when tax bills can go out and everything else. So it's, in my opinion, it's good to give yourself a little bit of flexibility to look at, at this. So with that being said.
May I just add one more comment?
Uh huh.
And that is, I like what Supervisor Shepherd said. Really, the 73 cents is a 4% increase. And realistically, our budget with inflation, Mr. McGruder was saying 6% inflation, you know, we're a little short. And people can understand that. I do want to address one thing. I meant to do this earlier. Someone from either yours, Ms. Biggs or yours, Ms. Demots, district called me a couple of days ago and said, you know, you shouldn't increase rates, you know, us seniors can't afford the, you know, on the fixed budgets and stuff like that. And I mentioned about how we'll talk about it at the end of this year. More specifically, this person just was above the limit of income. So they weren't eligible for it. So we need to make sure that we adjust that for inflation along the way, to make sure that, you know, the same struggling people get the assistance that they need. And that is just a reduced tax rate, because they qualify under certain terms and things like that. So again, getting back to the 73 versus 75, we're just giving our county, including our schools, the chance to absorb all of inflation at 75. But I sure hope that we can bring it back down to 73. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay. All right. So we are voting, this particular vote is to advertise the real estate property tax rate at 75 cents per hundred.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
I seconded it.
Oh, yeah.
We did.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, wait. Did we ever come out of work session?
Yes.
We did?
Yep, you're good.
I don't even remember that. Okay, good. All right. So with that being said, make sure everything's legal. Madam Clerk, you may call the roll.
Supervisor Demots?
Aye.
Supervisor Bone?
Aye.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
No.
Supervisor King?
No.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
No.
All right. So that motion fails. So now entertain another motion.
A motion we advertise at 73.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right.
Just vote.
You want to go ahead and call the roll then?
Vice Chair Biggs?
No.
Supervisor Demots?
Aye.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Aye.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Okay.
Five aye and two nay.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments or board business?
Well, we need to vote on the advertised budget.
Oh, yeah. What does that, yeah. Hold on. I have that figure somewhere.
239,9.
And I believe the number I have, and tell me if I'm wrong, is based on what you just voted for for the advertised tax rate, the advertised budget would be.
239,000.9. Okay. Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Go ahead and call the roll.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Supervisor, Vice Chair Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Demots?
Aye.
Supervisor Bone?
Aye.
Supervisor Shepherd? Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we are adjourned.
Thank everyone for your time. See you next Monday night.